Okay, good evening. I'd like to call to order the joint meeting of the Kattati City Council and the successor agency to the former Kattati Community Redevelopment Agency for Tuesday, June 27. We just returned from closed session. We reviewed documents and they are in the current packet, so we will be addressing those with the consent calendar. So with that, roll call, please.
Councilmember.
Here.
Councilmember Deloso.
Here.
Mayor Harvey.
Here.
Vice Mayor Landman.
Here.
Councilmember Moore.
Here.
Well, with that, will you join me in the Pledge of Legits? Okay, we will move on to the approval of the minutes and notice of waiving of reading of all resolutions and ordinances introduced and/or adopted under this agenda.
I'll move to approve.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
And Madam Mayor, I would abstain since I was absent from the meeting. Okay, that would be a four one vote. With that, I will move on to the announcements. The city of Kattati has special open office hours on Monday evenings from 5:00 p.m. to 7:00 by appointment in the Community Development Department at City Hall as part of its Kattati Open for Business program. This program provides personalized assistance and information to developers, current Kattati business owners, and those interested in starting a new business within the city. The Ronan Park Kattati Regional Library hosts events for all ages, including art exhibits, book clubs, and children's programs. All events are free and open to the public. For more information, call the library at (584) 9121 or visit www.sonoma library.org. The Kattati Historical Society Museum is open regularly the second Tuesday of each month, from 5:00 to 7:00, Saturdays from 1:00 to 4:00, and by appointment. For more information, call (707) 794-0305. Citizens interested in receiving City Kattati Community Alerts via text or email are encouraged to sign up at nixle.com. That would be N-I-X-L-E dot com. The city offers a variety of recreation programs for all ages. See details on the web at kattatisidy.org. The 25th Annual Kattati Kids' Day Parade and Festival will take place on June 8, including a free pancake breakfast from 7:00 to 10:00 at the Church of the Oaks. July 8. What did I say? Oh, sorry, July. Oh, well. July 8, including a free pancake. Thank you. Breakfast from 7:00 to 10:00 at Church of the Oaks, a parade from 10:00 to 11:00 a.m. in downtown Kattati. The festival will be from 11:00 a.m. to 2:00 p.m. in La Plaza Park. So, any other announcements? Okay. Approval of final agenda. Are there any changes to the agenda?
No changes.
Okay, no changes. Then we will move on to citizens' business and public comment for the consent calendar. Any member of the public wishing to speak to the council on any items listed on the consent calendar or any matter not listed on the agenda that are within the subject matter jurisdiction of the council may do so at this time. Pursuant to the Brown Act, the council is not allowed to consider issues or take action on any item not listed on the agenda during this period. Pursuant to City Council Policy 2016-1, comments of any member of the public are normally restricted to a total of three minutes in length per person for matters not on the agenda and a total of three minutes per person in length for any and all items on the consent calendar. The mayor may extend the time for a reasonable time where disability accommodations has been requested. Do we have any speaker cards? No speaker cards. Anyone wishing to address the council? Yes, George?
It's Councilman George Berich. For the benefit of the public, my name is George Berich. I'm a former city councilman here in Kattati. I want to welcome the public to another meeting of the Central Communist Committee of Kattati here tonight. And you can see that we have a very, another dismal turnout here for this meeting tonight, which speaks volumes about your ability to get more people to participate in our body politic and get involved in civil affairs. I did serve this city with honor and distinction. I exposed the racists on the city council in 2009. I exposed the money launderers. I exposed the crooks. And I was the voice of common sense that I brought to the city council. And that was quite a term there. Regarding the city budget that you just passed, the council keeps perpetrating this fraud on our community regarding the budget. Just because the budget balances does not, that's not an end-all. That's not necessarily a terrific thing. If you don't balance the budget, someone's going to jail. So the test of a budget is not whether it balances or not. If you're dealing with bad numbers and your budget is dishonest, you're overinflating anticipated revenues, you're not putting in the budget anticipated future expenditures, the budget is a fraud. Now, I was not able to speak on the budget after you already passed the budget at the last meeting, but where is the money for the homeless in Kattati in this budget? We had this parking program, which Mr. Deloso said is a very, very small step, thinking that maybe we might have something in the budget for the homeless, but I didn't see Apparently, there's no money in the budget for the horrendous weed abatement program that you people have failed to engage in. The city is blighted with high weeds. It's a scourge on the community. It's a fire danger. Rancho Adobe Fire District brought this issue up at the last meeting, and you people have completely disregarded your responsibility regarding your weed abatement duties and the city's weed abatement ordinances. Apparently, you're never going to replace any of the aging buildings in Kattati. You're going to kick that can down the road. There's nothing in the budget for that either, and I think that's shameful.
Thank you for your comments. Yes, sir? Please come up. Thank you.
I don't know if I'm able to comment on the Smart Train issue, whether that's one of the consent items.
That is on consent, so yes, you certainly may speak on that right now.
I just briefly wanted, my name is Ty Wilson. I live on San Terraway, about 200 yards from the Kattati Station, and about 100 yards from the track. My wife and I have lived there for about 13 years, and for the first time, we are talking about moving out of Kattati. I just have some questions about when passenger service will begin. And I've also got questions regarding the pre-quiet zone designation period and the necessity for running empty trains through our neighborhood at 4:40 in the morning, at 5:10, and again at 5:40. It really has disrupted what was a very peaceful neighborhood during those early morning hours in particular. I also would like to get clear on when the quiet zone will actually take effect. Last week, I spoke to Andrea at Supervisor Rabbit's office, and she said that without changes, we'll be ready to go by early August. That could be earlier, but I doubt it will be later. Today, I was told by the city of Kattati that, quote, "It looks like we'll have 180 days after the start of passenger service until the quiet zone designation goes into effect." So I was wondering whether it'd be possible for us to get a clear answer on when that quiet zone would actually take place. And then late last week, I learned that Kattati Station would in fact not be entirely a quiet zone, that there would still be a horn blast as the train left the station. And that I received, my wife and I received, was some great disappointment. We have been using a mixture of, you know, fans and sound machines, earplugs. We've closed our windows during these summer nights. Anyway, what I'd like to know is whether these blasts, and I've gotten two stories about whether it's going to be one long blast. That was Matt from Smart. And then I've also heard from Andrea at Supervisor Rabbit's that it's going to be two short, two very short toots is the way he described it. But I wonder whether these blasts, whether they're one or two, will be of the same decibel that the current horn sounded. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments.
I'm going to go ahead and speak on item F.
Certainly.
Thank you.
Counsel on the agenda is a motion to cancel the July 11 council meeting, and I would urge you to not cancel the meeting. There's plenty of items that need to be addressed that are not getting addressed in Kattati, and I would hope that you would take the July 11 date, maybe to start thinking about some of the issues that have been dear to your heart, that you don't seem to have time or the inclination to make good on your campaign promises, to bring them to the July 11 meeting. One may be very interesting to hear about is Damian's report regarding having our own public cable access channel here in Kattati, similar to the one that Ronan Park has. A few months ago, Damian said he was going to look into that. July 11 would be perfect. Also, we're in the midst of fire season. The weeds are very high. They're very dry after the hot weather we recently had. I hope that you don't address weed abatement and the fire dangers in Kattati to October or November, and you do it a little sooner. They pose a threat to the community. They're a blight to the community. July 11 would be a perfect opportunity to bring this issue forward, start coordinating with Rancho Adobe Fire District, and find out where you both, both these agencies are going to work together to solve this problem. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. Anyone else wishing to speak on citizens' business or the consent calendar? Seeing none, I will close citizens' business. Anyone have any comments before I speak to staff?
No, I'm assuming you're going to ask some clarification on the Smart Train?
Yes.
Yeah.
I am.
That's actually an item later in regular agenda, too. And I caught that, I'm sorry, after we started talking about it. So, I mean, since it's been asked, maybe this would be a great time to answer at least those basic questions now.
Oh, you're right.
But we're going to go over some more detail in a few minutes, too. Never hurts to get an early start.
So, would you like to, care to address it now or address it?
So, I mean, we can start with just some basic questions, and then we'll get into a full report at that regular calendar item later. If the people that commented are so inclined, stick around for that. But...
Nonetheless, even after that, can you please circle back with Mr. Wilson to make sure that all his concerns are get addressed?
Yes.
Thank you.
Yeah, I, we will.
Okay.
So, in terms of when Smart is, and I have to caveat all this by saying, of course, we're not smart, so we don't know exactly what they're doing. We only can ask them what they're doing, and then they tell us. And sometimes it's, you know, sometimes it evolves like the data at the start of the passenger service. We don't know for sure. We do know what we read in the newspaper, which is they're going to start some free service one day this Thursday, the 29th. They're going to have some free service from Ronan Park to Marin. And then they are also going to do some free service on July 1 and July 4. And the expectation is they're going to start pass, actual revenue passenger service, or I should say, regular passenger service sometime in the near future after that. So I'd expect it in July sometime, but I don't, I don't really know.
But Damian, just to add to that, I mean, it's important to state that that's even out of Smart's hands, because until the federal regulatory agency approves them to allow for fee service, they can't start until that approval comes from, I can't remember the federal agency, but...
It's FRA, yeah.
Yeah, right.
They're undergoing system testing now and certification, so that is true. So it's, they need their final certification from the Federal Railroad Administration to actually start service.
And I think that some of the crossings have not been certified yet.
That's primarily what the FRA is looking at, is looking at the crossings and making sure. So this isn't a quiet zone issue.
Right.
This is just a, do the crossings and the positive train control actually work like they're supposed to?
Right.
So that the train system itself is safe to operate?
Right.
And then, so, so we'll get into the co-op agreement on the regular calendar item, but the co-op agreement, as it's written right now, says that it's 180 days after the start of service. That is, that's based on CPUC safety recommendations, which we'll talk more in detail about later. So I think the last question was about the, what the train does when it's at the station. So now, I should probably clarify that a quiet zone, a quiet zone doesn't mean the train is quiet. A quiet zone means that it's not required to blow its horn in all the circumstances that normally would be required to blow its horn in. So the conductor still has the discretion to blow the horn if he or she perceives some hazard on the tracks or, you know, there's some other, you know, issue that, that in the conductor's opinion presents a safety issue. And so they still have full authority to blow the horn in those cases. It's my understanding that when they, when they leave the station, they do two short blasts. That's just my understanding. I'm not the train guy, but that's what I've heard. And that's per federal regulation is my understanding.
And through the mayor, that would be at any station? That's not something intrinsic to a issue with our station? Any quiet station?
My understanding, it would be any station, quiet zone or not.
Okay. And so there's not a lot of flexibility for us, other than hoping they keep that small short?
It's, I mean, it's certainly something that we'll discuss when we get in, when we're forming the quiet zone, because I myself want to become more informed on that, too. But that's, you know, when San Rafael and Nevado have been going through the process, that's all their materials basically state that that's what Smart's doing.
And lastly, the last again through the mayor.
Yeah.
I think there was a question, if there's two short blasts or one blast as a general safety warning post-quiet zone leaving, are they the same decibel level as the current thing? I would assume this is a simple mechanical system, compressed air, that it's not controllable, but I'm going to ask just in case.
So I don't know, but I'm assuming they're using the same train horn that they would use.
Okay. Thank you.
But I don't know. That's just my assumption.
Okay, but we'll check on that.
Yeah, we're looking into it.
And then also, I read all the papers in there, and there is a little bit of disconnect between the, when it goes into effect. There was some recommendations that it go into effect 180 days, but there was also then some other papers that, you know, said that it goes in, I forget how many days, some number of days, 15 days after something happens. So that's a big gap.
Yeah, so the short explanation is that there's the statutorily required time, which is one thing, and then there's the what the...
Is that the shorter time?
That's the shorter time.
Okay.
Yeah. Yeah, so there's a, there's something called a notice of intent that you have to file to form a quiet zone. And that's basically the agency that's forming the quiet zone, like a city, for example, telling the world or anyone that has any interest in that rail line that, that the city intends to create a quiet zone here. And then that starts, I believe it's a 30-day period, 60-day period, where people can respond and submit letters to the agency that's going to form the quiet zone. And then the next step is to file what's called a notice of establishment. And that's basically saying, okay, I told you I intend to do it, and now I'm, now I'm telling you that I'm intending to establish it. And that's, I believe, a 21-day period after you issue that before you can actually establish a quiet zone. And so that's just strictly per the regulations. CPUC is the regulatory body in California that oversees rail operations, and they recommend that for a system like Smart that has not been in operation for a decade or longer, that that quiet zones don't go into effect until 180 days after the start of service. And the reason being, it's a safety reason, the reason being is that they want to make sure everyone's, I mean, it's unfortunate for the people that live along the rail line itself, but for everyone else that doesn't. The idea there, as I understand it, is to make sure that they are aware of the fact that there's now a train running, and they're more cognizant when they approach rail crossings, so it's a safety thing. And so when we get into the agreement, the co-op agreement says 180 days following the CPUC safety recommendation, because that's what the county's going with.
Okay.
Can I ask you a question?
Yes.
No, I mean, if you...
I have one more. My understanding is the reason that it starts so early is that trains are kept up by the airport at their station, and they need to get all the way down to San Rafael to start service. So they actually don't have them staying down in San Rafael at night, so they actually have to get all the way down there for northbound service. Is that a correct assumption?
Yeah, there's, I believe there's two or three runs before even like 6:30 or something. There's, you know, southbound, but it's because they start at the airport.
Right.
Storage area.
Right.
And so they're going through, going through unincorporated county, and then through Santa Rosa, and then through Ronan Park, and then finally through Kattati. But it's early to make it down to San Rafael in time for...
Yeah, because I believe that they start at about 4:15.
It's about 4:15, the first train leaves here.
Yeah, it's the first time the train...
And it gets down here about four, the first train reaches Kattati about 4:45 or so.
Something like that, yeah.
Yeah.
Okay.
According to their current schedule.
Okay.
Yeah.
Okay. We will talk about it in the next, in the next item. I just was, since you brought it up in this section, so did you, you had a question. Sorry.
If you can remember dates, when we, when we applied for the quiet zone, we were not authorized, excuse me, authorized to do it as one entity, and we had to go in partnership with the city of Ronan Park and the county of Sonoma. And just a rough estimate, how long ago did we submit an application for this quiet zone?
March and May.
So my point, say it louder.
March and May.
Thank you. My point is that sometimes these things move at glacial paces, and it's unfortunate, especially for those living along the track, because we've heard from a lot of people, and I've heard from people up in Santa Rosa about this and down in Petaluma about this. But I think the, you know, we're sort of working within the system that exists, and it's, it's not moving as fast as all of us would like it to. That's the unfortunate part. And we would have thought, the trains would have been running a year ago, and, you know, here we are, still not running. So, yeah, it's an unfortunate situation, but I just was trying to make a point that, you know, we had applied for this a significant period of time ago, it still is not approved.
Yeah, and it is, it's true, too, that the city can't apply on our own.
Right.
So we had to go with another agency.
Right. Thank you.
And that's because of the distances between our two crossings and the crossing at Southwest and the crossing at Gray Road.
Yeah, you need...
We're not half a mile.
You need to create at least a half a mile, right, of quiet zone. And we don't have the jurisdictional territory that the rail line goes through that amounts to half a mile. So we had to partner with someone else. And it, I mean, the logic behind that is just a safety logic from a train operator's perspective, that you wouldn't be going in and out of quiet zones at every street crossing. You know, so there's blocks, significant blocks of quiet zone.
Yeah.
Just one quick question. I think you touched on this, but I'm not sure if I quite followed it. So we have a range. There's a minimum legal, which could be as little as 81 days from start of service, and then there's the CPUC requested, if heavily advised, which would be a full 180 days past that start of service. And because we are, I won't call it partnering, but because we need to work with the county in Ronan Park, if the county, most importantly, in Ronan Park, both choose to go with the more prudent but less pleasant 180 days, are we forced to? Do we have to do all three the same with that? Or do we have the option to do what we prefer for our, for our constituents?
I believe we have to do it together, because we're filing a notice of intent as a group, and we'd file, we'd also file a notice of establishment as a group. I think we would, we would have to, in theory, break off and do our own quiet zone establishment, which we can't do.
And we don't have the time length to do it.
We can't do it, anyway.
Okay, thank you.
So I think we're, I mean, we're, excuse the pun, but we're kind of hooked to the train on that one.
Okay. So, more to come on that item. And with that, we will, if anyone else has any other comments on anything? No? Okay. Then we will move to direction on future agenda items.
No, tonight, no.
Nothing? Okay. Then we will move on to the consent calendar. I would move to approve consent calendar items A through F.
And I'll second that.
I have a motion and a second. All in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Then we will consider that a five-o vote. Then we will move on to public hearing. This long item, basically the lighting districts, I'm just going to call it that.
This is the third trip back to council on this, which is routine. Every year, we have to go through this process to levy once again assessments on the 10 districts. And this year, we're adding the decision to consolidate the districts, which will streamline the process. Instead of adopting 10 resolutions, we just adopt the one. So on February 14, we came before council, and council directed, as the city engineer myself, to prepare the engineer's report. On June 13, council approved the engineer's report and adopted the resolution of intent to consolidate the districts and levy the assessments, and also set the date for this public hearing to make the decision on levying the assessments. Consolidating the district into one, each district, mentioned this on the 13th, is to retain its name, and then they would have the following, they would have the names what, be called zones 1 through 10. And there's also a diagram that we created this year that shows the 10 zones. Yeah, well, it really doesn't need a PowerPoint. The improvements this year were, and I'm sorry, last year were the streetlight improvements with the LEDs, and then there's landscape and replanting in zones 2 and 8, and a split rail fence in zone 8, the park meadows. And the planned improvements next year fall entirely within zone 8, park meadows, and that is to install six lights on the pathway, and then that's, that's it for next year for the improvements beyond just regular maintenance. All of the reserves in the zones, they go up gradually, except for the park meadows, which goes down with the improvement costs assessed to that, charged against those reserves. Okay, I just wanted to then jump to the recommendation, which is to hold a public hearing on this item, and then consider adopting a resolution consolidating the 10 assessment districts, levying and collecting the annual assessment, and approving the engineer's report for 1718, and approving allowance to increase the maximum assessments in accordance with the construction cost index for San Francisco for zone 7, 8, 9, and 10. And that concludes my presentation. I'd be happy to respond to any questions you may have.
Questions? Nope. Then I will open it up for public comment. Have any public comment on this item? Yes, George?
Well, it just seems to me that had you left things alone, and you would have had to make 10 different motions for 10 different assessment districts, had you done that for the next 100 years, each year, you would have never used up as much time as you have on changing this, to this process. If that was the purpose, is to streamline the motion process, I don't see it. This is your government at work.
Thank you very much for your comments. Anyone else wishing to speak on this item? Seeing none, I will close public comment. Yes?
Just a quick point to... Just a quick point to consider, it's true. Moving 10 separate resolutions wouldn't take probably quite as long as it did to make the change, but the staff time every year to prepare 10 individual staff reports is significant and costs our constituents and your neighbors significant money. So I do see improvement with this. And with that, if we're ready, I'd be happy to move a resolution consolidating the landscaping, lighting, maintenance districts, approving the annual engineers' report, confirming the assessment diagram and annual assessment amounts, and authorizing the levying and collection of assessments for fiscal year 2017, 18, for the Cattati landscaping, lighting assessment district for zones 1 through 10 pursuant to the Landscaping and Lighting Act of 1972.
I'll second that.
We have a motion and a second. All in favor? Aye. Let that be a 5-0 vote. See, we didn't forget.
We were gonna do it on the July 11th.
Good evening, Mayor and members of the council. Norm Veloso, Director of Admin Services. One of the main goals of the Admin Services Department is to promote excellence in the city's financial management. Promoting excellence in financial management requires that we establish best practice in managing the city's finances by establishing certain policies and procedures. The document being presented tonight establishes prudent guiding principles, policies and procedures for financial management, budget development, and fiscal administration. This document will be updated periodically and will cover the following categories. General financial principles, annual operating budget policy, capital improvement program, revenues, expenditures, cash management, debt management, fund balances, and financial reporting. These policies are essential and central to the strategic, long-term approach to financial management. In addition, these policies will create and define shared understanding of how the city will develop financial practices and manage its resources to provide the best value to the community and provide structure, boundaries, and limits on the actions the city staff may take. Lastly, the formal adoption of this financial policies and procedures and principles will promote public confidence and enhance transparency. So tonight we are recommending the adoption of this financial policies and procedures for the city of Cattati. That ends the presentation for tonight. Open to any questions?
Questions? Questions? Okay. John, did you have a question?
I might wait until you're done with public comment.
Okay, all right. Then, public comment on this item? Yes, George?
Well, I say hogwash. There haven't been any principles or policies in place for the last 50 years. Now we're gonna have these policies, policies that you can do N runs around, you can circumvent, you can work with staff to run the numbers any way that you want to. And as far as policies and practices are concerned, how is that code of conduct working for the city council that you adopted some years ago, never been enforced, done N runs around, circumvented, hijacked, manipulated? You know, I just see this as just, you know, public confidence? After this last budget that you passed, public confidence? How ridiculous. You balance, you appear to have balanced a budget which was dishonest on its face and you come back two weeks later and you put forth recommendations for good policies and good practices. It's ironic. The, the public should be shocked if you took a look at the budget and you took, and you listened to the concerns from the public. This is a total farce. And, you know, I, I've gotta think that city council has put staff up to this. It's no offense to city staff, you know, we've lost financial director after financial director after financial director. They've left so discouraged, so frustrated with the way that they were asked to manipulate the budget and handle the finances of this city. We don't have to go through the laundry list of them, you know them all by name. And, and now this. It, it's quite astounding.
Thank you for your comments. Anyone else wishing to speak on this item? Seeing none, I will close public comment. Yes, Wendy? Oops, sorry.
No, no, it's okay. Let's just say it was coughing. So I just wanted to commend Norm because I am not a budget person. Numbers make my eyes cross. And it has been so much easier to understand and the, it's been so much easier to understand the budget and how it's been written, so I wanted to commend you for that as well. And then forgive me if I'm repeating anything that came up at the last meeting, but as far as our budget process and how you've been able to improve things, didn't we increase our ratings from the independent auditor that comes in to all the cities and has no ties to the cities?
Yes, we have.
Okay, thank you very much for improving our system.
Yeah, you know, it, it's funny, 'cause I mentioned this at our budget meeting last time, that, you know, when, when our budget is called a farce and a hoax and yet we get an independent audit at the end of the fiscal year that shows indeed what we programmed, what we expended, or even our investments, they all meet a very high standard. So how that's a farce, I don't know. I really, I'm really confused by that. And some of the policies in here are existing policies that, you know, I was trying to find the dates on them and I should have done this ahead of time, but I went back to one, which was from 2008. So these aren't necessarily new policies. The policy here is putting them into, sorry, one repository.
Correct.
So it's not like, you know, these are just being created willy-nilly overnight. Some of them have been around for many years, many years that go back to even former council members, I would guess. So I do have some very specific questions and I have like a number of pages dog-eared and I don't wanna sit here and painstakingly go through all of them. So I'll pass the baton, but I'll try to, I'll try to get my notes brief and, and make it a little bit easier.
So we'll come back to you.
Yeah, unfortunately you may have to come back to me.
Okay. Go this way.
Well, if you're coming this way, I'd just like to see, I think my colleague, Mr. Delasso summed it up pretty well, certainly on the question of audits. One other thing about audits that isn't usually mentioned and certainly seem to have been missed or misunderstood is that they just don't check the numbers. I believe they also check the system that the city, in this case, the municipality, has put in place to make sure that system is workable, clean, and that a good result comes out of that. When you see something like that and use independent outsiders to say, number one, the policies and practice you have in place are good, workable, they're the standard we look for, and the numbers add up, that's a pretty good thumbs up. I don't know if that's phony or not, I'm not, shouldn't work, in what world, that would be fake. Lastly, when you look at a budget where your reserves have increased, you've met your, your costs are below, which you're, you're spending less than you're taking in, you're hiring new police as well as new public works as promised, I'm not seeing the bad news. I, I, I understand that you see that differently and you do see bad news quite often, but I do fail to see it. So I did wanna make that comment on the budget, 'cause I think it's important to point out, it's more than just somebody saying, yeah, the numbers seem to add up that are listed here. They check the whole system to make sure it works. So, sorry, that dog just won't hunt. It's a good budget.
Tom?
I think you did a great job on this. I think that there are a couple of things that's kinda stood out to me as I was going over this. One thing I do gotta comment on, that it really doesn't matter, because if there's something in here, we can just do an end around and change it as we need down the road. Right? So it's an adopt, it's a, it's a document that could be adapted if things were to change.
Correct.
Not that that's typically our purpose, but apparently according to some people, that is our purpose. In reference to the investments within the parameters that are available within municipal government, I know that a lot of what we can do is investing in bond funds and special revenue funds and things like that. Do we have, it doesn't appear that we necessarily have a opportunity or the ability to specifically direct on maybe some socially conscious funds. I mean, I, I know that we strive to be non-discriminating, but it doesn't necessarily mean that we're not investing in Chevron or Philip Morris or things like that, unless any of the municipal pools that we're part of do not participate in that.
Actually, our investment guideline policies is above and beyond a normal local agency investment guide, because not only we cover safety, liquidity, and yield, we also put a fourth category, which is the social and political considerations. As far as the investments of the city, about 96% of our investments are with LEAF, which is the Local Agency Investment Fund, which is also guided by and, by certain investment guidelines, specifically to make sure that they are within certain boundaries and limits. At the same time, this is a, an investment that is being audited consistently and continually. So I, I would say 96% of that with LEAF and also with the Sonoma County Investment Pool. And then a minimal part of that is being invested on certain cities.
On the LEAF, we don't, do we know what the percentage of that is?
It's, it's 93% with Local Agency Investment Fund and about 3% of that with the Sonoma County Investment Funds.
But of the 96%?
Yes.
We don't know what percentage of that is, is socially conscious funds or investments?
Not specifically a, a number, yes.
Is that something that is easily attainable, based on the prospectus or the performance of those funds? I would imagine as a public entity.
I, I believe that there are certain guidelines that LEAF follows. And I, if, and I'm, I'm sure they are aware of certain policies and procedures that are in place to make sure that the investments are being placed in a correct investment that are within the guidelines of, of LEAF.
I think I'll, just ask, also add that organizations like LEAF, they're constantly actively managing their funds.
Right.
So any particular snapshot in time will change continuously, you know, they're, so it'd be hard to, it'd be hard to nail down exactly, you know, how things are invested in a given time.
And the LEAF funds are all, they're not all bond funds for municipalities, they're, they're...
US treasuries and securities.
US treasuries.
It's a mix.
And...
It's a mix. It's, it's largely US-based funds.
Money market funds and things like that?
They don't do a lot of foreign investment.
Certain portions of that are money market investments.
I'd love to see that down the road. We don't have to worry about that tonight. But I love the document you have here. There was a couple of issues that I looked at that I thought the language was a little strong, but all in all, I think it's very positive and it's a great policy to adopt.
And again, I just, if I just may add, the, these are just guidelines for us and the best practices that, that we are recommending to be adopted are best practices that the Government Finance Office Associations have recommended, that covers both large and small agencies. And these are best practices that the GFAA Board had recommended and majority of local agencies are actually adopting as well.
Thank you.
Did you want to ask your questions?
No, they weren't questions, they were just continual comments.
Oh.
And, super brief, super brief. I did find one resolution that goes back to 1992, again, just proving the point that these haven't been developed quickly. And, and one other one from 2009, which was a unanimous 5-0 vote of Guardino, Coleman Sangor, Barrett, Chigilardi, and Orchard. So these have been around for some time. Thanks.
Norm, I want to thank you for the budget. It was very easy to understand. For those in the audience that weren't here from the last meeting, you actually brought this item forward at the last meeting to be processed with the budget. And I know it was your intent to have this document go along with the approved budget, but because our meeting was so late, this was one of the items that we moved to tonight's meeting. So that therein is why it's not that it's after the budget. We purposely did not keep the meeting going any longer than it already had a couple weeks ago. The one thing that you keep doing and bringing up and bringing to our city is best practices. I know that that's been important to you. It's been important to you since you got here and you have continued to move us towards what are the best practices and standards getting us through the right accounting policies and things like that. So this is very nice that you have done this for us. I would like you in a minute to talk a little bit about our reserves, because I know you work very hard. And we, in addition to, and I'll probably get it wrong, we have a policy-driven 25% reserve and I believe over that we were also had a 72% or the combined, total of 72%. So I think that's a pretty good measure of what, what our reserves are like, so that we have put away to make sure that we can handle those rainy days. And then lastly, we did get a letter and it was asking about the investment policy. And I would like to add, it says, in the investment policy, it says recognizes that it has an equal obligation to be aware of the social and political impacts of investments. I would like to ask if we could add environmental, social, environmental, and political impacts of our investments to address that issue. And thank you again, Norm. I appreciate all the work that you've done on all of our finances. And I, unlike Wendy, I love budgets, so I really appreciate how you've brought us along with that, 'cause they used to be kinda confusing. So with that...
I'll make a motion that we adopt a resolution approving the city of Cattati's financial principles and policies.
I'll second that.
I'm sorry, real quick, before you finish the motion.
Too late.
Before you vote on the motion. So the mayor has a suggestion.
To add, yeah.
To add, is that part of the motion or...
Is that part of your motion?
Or just...
Sure.
And so if...
As amended?
Okay, so if that is, if that is part of the motion, let me just suggest maybe a slight wording tweak on that before we vote.
Okay.
All right, so it says, this is what it'd be changed to. In addition, the city recognizes that it shall strive to be aware of the social, political, and environmental impacts of its investments and subsequently act so forth. You'd like the rest of the sentence? Just to set the aspirational goal?
Mm-hmm.
Does that sound okay?
That's the intent.
I'll second that amended motion.
Great, thanks.
So, I have an amended motion and amended second. All in favor? Aye. Any nays? No? Let that show a 5-0 vote. And we will move, let's see, on to the Sonoma County-Cattati Cooperative Agreement to establish a quiet zone.
Thank you, Mayor. Members of the council, seems like we just talked about this.
That's right, we'll talk about it again.
Okay, so, so like we touched on earlier, the city of Cattati is unable by itself to establish a quiet zone, so therefore we've been working with the county of Sonoma as well as the city of Roanoke Park to go in on a cooperative quiet zone establishment. And the agreement that's in the council packet tonight is the, the draft, I shouldn't say as draft, it's the proposed cooperative agreement, that basically, in essence, says that the county takes the lead on establishing the quiet zone and each respective jurisdiction is responsible for its own improvements, supplemental safety measures, and so forth. So it's a pretty short agreement, that's in essence what it says, 'cause the, for obvious reasons, the county didn't wanna also take on any responsibility for our safety measures at our crossings outside of its own jurisdiction. And the county has already, the county board of supervisors have already approved... And the county has already, the county board of supervisors have already approved this agreement. We'd be the second, Roner Park, I believe, is in early July to approve this agreement. It's a three-party agreement, and the terms of it are essentially what we talked about earlier, which is the county takes the lead, once SMART starts passenger service, the quiet zone would go into effect, the language is within one hundred and eighty days after that time period. Like I mentioned earlier, the one hundred and eighty days comes from, if you go into the packet a little further on packet page two forty-nine, it's a letter from the California Public Utilities Commission, and if you look on the second page of it, on page two forty-nine, item B, that's where the one hundred and eighty day period comes from. And they're basically recommending that, because of SMART being a newly constituted train service that didn't exist, unlike maybe other rail services that have been in operation continuously over a period of time, and they're establishing quiet zones in those cases. In this case, it was different, I guess, from the CPUC's perspective because nothing's been happening for over a decade, and so they wanted to make sure that people that are sort of used to crossing the grade crossings are fully aware of the fact that there's a fully operational train system running before they institute the quiet zone. At least that's CPUC's recommendation, and that's what the county has built into their agreement. So with that, I'd be happy to answer any questions.
So I'm going to ask one quick question. So I am reading that page, page two forty-nine, it says recommends. So there's a difference in my mind between recommends and requires. So does that mean that there is some leeway there because they're not requiring it? Or from the PUC, does that mean recommends means the same as requires?
Well, so I think, I believe, and maybe Robin has some additional information on this, but I believe that the county's perspective on it was that the CPUC is the agency that oversees rail operations in California, and they're sort of the safety people related to rail. And so they made the recommendation that one hundred and eighty days pass after a rail service starts because of the unique circumstances around SMART's initial operation. And the county, as I understand it, didn't want to do something different than the experts recommend, and so that's why it's in the agreement that way.
Okay.
But it is not, strictly speaking, it's not a requirement.
Okay.
It's a recommendation.
Okay. Did you have questions?
Yeah. So, but with that, we are still stuck. If the county decides that the most prudent thing is to stick with one hundred and eighty days and they're not movable on that, then we have no option? Would I, that's what I understood earlier talking to you, from the perspective, legal perspective, it didn't appear to be so?
If I may, I spoke with counsel for the county and Roner Park, and both the Roner Park attorney and I had requested a shorter period of time than the one hundred and eighty days, and we were told by county council that they felt, particularly at the outset, and the board of supervisors felt at the outset, that it was important to honor the recommendation of the CPUC. The county did say that if there was a desire to change that recommendation or change the language in the agreement, it would have to go back to the board of supervisors and, you know, they did not give us good prognosis for having that changed, but that's not to say that it couldn't be tried. The other thing, too, is it does say establish within one hundred and eighty days. I don't think it necessarily forecloses a shorter period of time if, once the operation gets going and we see that there's been a high level of education through all the member cities and people are very well aware of how the horns sound and when they sound, it might quite be possible at that point that the county would feel, you know, what, we've done a great job educating, we're ready to go, let's shorten it by a couple months.
I think that's what I wanted to go, I mean, I do see from the county's perspective, I mean, it's difficult, if you're sitting there living next to this track, that's one thing, but if you're responsible for the whole rail and you're living in a region that hasn't had rail through here, what, twenty, thirty years probably, I can see why they'd want to be very careful and let's make sure everything's working and we're going to take forever to do this. I could see, I could see why they'd want to come from that direction. But I was wondering if there wasn't somewhere to meet in the middle between, with reasonable prudence, but perhaps not excessive prudence, but at the same time, you know, take a look at a slightly shorter time. And I wonder if it would be as simple as just, and perhaps if Roner Park feels the same way, it sounds like their representation felt the way, we could ask if prudently possible, if their targets are met early, anything we can do to accelerate that one hundred and eighty day time schedule that they put together to alleviate constituents, their constituents as well as concerns and the impact they have from this, I think would be really beneficial. I'd be comfortable putting that on record. I think that somewhere in between there, we can say we've been prudent and careful, and at the same time, we're trying to meet the needs of people who live in the region.
Well, I think we certainly could explore that. What I was told by county council was if we actually changed the language now, the board having already approved it, it will be difficult, we'll have to go back to the board, et cetera. But I think if we all sign on to this agreement and then want to have further discussion about, you know, are we going to go right up to the one hundred and eightieth day, or is there a, you know, basis for having a shorter period of time?
Perhaps just drafting a letter from the city and perhaps working with our neighbor Roner Park just to do that. So we're all still working in harness and keeping this timeframe, because I agree, if we have to go through staff again at the board of supervisors, it'll be three hundred and sixty days probably before we see it, and we don't want that. Thank you, I think that's a great idea. See what council and the public thinks.
Did you?
Yes, thank you. Again, in item six of the agreement, it says within one hundred and eighty days. That doesn't mean on the one hundred and eighty-first day this will transpire. So the flexibility, I think, is already built in. I completely disagree with the CPUC's recommendation, though, I will tell you that right now. And the reason I say that is, how long, and we can ask people who live on the tracks, how long have these trains been running and blaring their horns? It's been a significant period of time, so much so that I've even witnessed people drive around the downed arms, which is incredibly dangerous as we all know. But I think, I think people, for the most part, I mean, we hear of accidents on train tracks, seems like a little too often, but it would probably behoove the three jurisdictions for this particular quiet zone application to really promote the safety of the rail crossings. And I mean, from social media to announcements to whatever, you know, signage, whatever we can do to then go back and show the county, hey, look, it's been, instead of this, let's say ninety days down the road, it's like, look what we've done, and there've been, you know, hopefully we can say there've been no serious accidents of any kind, and things are running smoothly. That doesn't mean in ninety days they'll do it, but I'm just saying, there's probably a way to speed up the process, and I think it would behoove at least us and Roner Park to look at that as an option. I'm sure the city manager could talk to Darren, city manager at Roner Park, and work that out. I wanted to ask a question about concerns that have been raised about quiet zones when they first came up, that other cities had, and that was related to liability. It was kind of addressed in here, but where has that, where has that issue gone?
So my understa, so the issue that you're talking about is the, is the requirement for the local jurisdictions establishing a quiet zone to enter into a maintenance agreement with SMART that was not favorable to the cities, right?
Right.
So where, so where it seems to stand is, is nobody has seemed to have entered into a maintenance agreement yet, to my knowledge. It was all of our collective understandings that that was part of the quiet zone establishment process, but it seems to not be the case now. And the quiet zones are self, they appear to be self-establishing. So in other words, you go through the notice of intent, you go through the notice of establishment, and you wait for the statutory period of time, and then poof, you're a quiet zone. Nobody sends you a letter saying you're a quiet zone. It just, you are now, like magically overnight. So that, that removes that concern about, I see, liability. So that's a separate issue that runs parallel to this one. It's still something that needs to be addressed, for sure, in terms of respective maintenance responsibilities at grade crossings. I think that's, you know, that's something that's going to have to continue to move along, but it's not tied specifically to the establishment of the quiet zone, which was the concern.
Which it shouldn't have been in the first place, so, okay, well, that's good to hear. And again, I just think, I'm not saying anything, it's common sense, but I just think that if we can do our part to publicize the safety-related issues of crossing quiet zones, and Roner Park can do the same, that might, you know, help the county look at this as a slightly different issue and then maybe look more favorably in lieu of something, in lieu of one hundred and eighty days, something less than that. We don't know, but it's worth trying, and it's the right thing to do anyway, so, thank you.
Wendy? Along those lines of what John was asking, so do we need a sign-off from SMART to actually constitute? Because it seems like they were saying they weren't going to do this unless we gave them this maintenance agreement that really isn't a maintenance agreement, it's a liability agreement. Do we need their sign-off to go through this process?
My understanding is that we do not.
No, so they were trying to utilize this, okay. Doesn't surprise me.
They submit comments. When we submit the application, or we submit the notice of intent for a quiet zone, then they submit comments.
I mean, anyone can submit comments, right? Correct?
Correct.
Yeah, that's what I thought. And then one more question. On page two forty-eight, it talks about some items on Iscatati Avenue, obviously some markings, and there's a bar missing, and an advanced warning sign is too far from the crossing. Have those items been addressed?
Yeah, we moved, we moved the signage and put the bar, and that was for the class, the class one pedestrian path that SMART has. That was a baller, like a center median bar at the island in the middle of the road, which we've already done, as well as the signage changes and things.
Okay, so those are obviant here. Okay, that was, that was my other question. Any other questions? Okay, I, oh, yes, I'm sorry. I'm so sorry.
Just not the loud John there. So you're talking about we have no maintenance agreements, but there's really, I haven't seen anything in reference to a liability absorption or taking on a greater liability if we have the quiet zone?
The maintenance agreement that SMART proposed to all the cities includes indemnification from the city to SMART and an insurance requirement on the part of each city. For months, and starting primarily further south with Marin Cities and Petaluma, the city attorneys have been in negotiation trying to get, if anything, regarding those two provisions, mutuality. We each agree to indemnify each other if there's any issue that, you know, was found to come from faulty maintenance or whatever on our part. And SMART has been steadfast in refusing to have any mutuality and has been arguing that they absolutely have a right to have this agreement before the SMART zones go into effect, and we've learned through Petaluma that that is not the case because Petaluma is actually kind of ahead of the curve, and they've established their quiet zone, and then SMART came back to them and said, well, you can't do this until we've completed our testing. And Petaluma has said, no, it's done, we've done it, you can continue right along testing if you wish, but, you know, you can't, you can't hold the cities hostage to agreeing to indemnification or insurance. And we're trying to have a meeting with SMART's council, all of the city attorneys who are affected in the quiet zone area, you know, with a view of either trying to get a mutually acceptable agreement that would cover maintenance but would not have these onerous requirements, or in fact, to try to, what we think is educate them that by putting indemnification and insurance issues in an agreement like this, they, as well as cities, may actually be giving up some statutory immunities that they have right now, because this language could be read as counteracting the immunity that we have at this point. So we haven't had good reception yet in terms of trying to have this sit-down, but I think SMART's council now has the message that none of the cities are leaping forward to join, sign this agreement or do anything. So I don't know where we will end up, but we're trying to have a dialogue about it.
So even though Petaluma has gone forward with this, that doesn't mean it's going to stand up down the road?
Well, I think under the... FRA regulations, I think it will stand up. I think what Petaluma had mentioned is, you know, SMART may have other opportunities or think they have other opportunities to exert other kinds of leverage down the road, you know, whether it have to do with funding or other things, I don't know exactly, you know, what that might be, but it's more of just, can we, can we persuade SMART or convince them that what they're asking for is really overreaching and not necessary, and try and work it out?
Okay, I know that there's some issues that have come up with REMIF on potential increased liability exposure, and we haven't come to anything on that yet, but it's, it's pretty wide open, so.
Well, can I, can I just ask a very broad liability question? Nobody even needs to answer, you can just look at me and smile and we'll move on. But I mean, we have train tracks now, okay? And let's say there's a horrible accident that occurs, the city could easily be sued by whomever is injured, and whether we're found to be liable or not, all of this kind of is even beyond any of these agreements, is it not? I mean, could that not occur at this point? It just seems like, it just seems like we're almost being held hostage, and there's something to be made by SMART from all the cities, and I just, I think that's ridiculous. So I don't, you know, again, if REMIF is looking at this, that's all great, but I just don't see this as, you know, sort of a deal-breaking kind of issue, and we just need to move on. And I think what Petaluma did is wise. I'm done, no, I'm done.
Well, and the other thing is, is to the best of my knowledge, SMART doesn't want to be sharing any of its fares to help cover the maintenance, so they're collecting a fare, and, you know, part of that fare is the maintenance of the tracks and the crossings and all that. So I think it's a little far-reaching for them to then expect us to help pay for that when they don't want to seem to share in revenue. So maybe if they want to share in the revenue, we could help with the maintenance, I don't know.
Yeah, I just, you know, I think, I think it's fair to say that if there's some sort of accident on the tracks, everybody that's standing around is going to get sued, right? Including the city and SMART and everyone else. And there's, there's certain statutory liabilities that each agency might have, and this whole discussion is about keeping those statutory liabilities where they are and not shifting them via an agreement, if in one way or the other, really, you know.
Okay. With that, I will open up public comment on this item. Yes, Mr. Wilson, you've been very patient, thank you.
I want to thank the council for this discussion tonight. To Mr. Delis' point, there have been months of trial runs, and I would hope that that evidence could be brought to bear with the three parties involved with the CPUC, that the community has undergone a fairly thorough education, I believe, since the fall of last year perhaps. Secondly, I just want to suggest that if there was any possibility, since really the reason for stopping, this is even post-quiet zone designation, that, that my concern primarily lies with the stopping of the train at four forty AM, at five ten AM, and even at five forty AM, when there's likely not to be many, many passengers, and really the sole purpose at that point seems to be the movement of trains from there overnight, parking near the airport down to, down to Marin. And if there's any way that we can simply be bypassed as a, as a stop during those periods, if it doesn't seem to make financial sense for anyone, that'd be a consideration for, for SMART. And if we can bring, if the council and its representatives can bring any pressure to bear in that regard, I would greatly appreciate it. Anyway, again, I thank you very much for this session tonight.
Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. Yes, George?
What a mess. What a complete mess. This is worse than my most feared thoughts where this would go. We had hearings about the quiet zones. We talked about the liabilities months ago. We've already been through that. Regarding the loudness of these horns, either the council knew about it, and were so overcome with train fever, they didn't want to bring up the issue, or they didn't think about it, because, for whatever reason, or they've completely ignored the responsibilities to bring this issue forward, so that we carry on this whole idea of the SMART train, and get us on board, sorry for the pun, and to get us to this point where we're gonna start just rectifying and correcting these problems with the system as we go along. It was the concern that I brought up when the city approved the train station to begin with, was the train noise. City could have asked SMART to bring in a test horn, a test air horn, and educate the community on how loud it would actually be. Council didn't want anything to do with that. Don't want any bad news. Don't want to put anybody on notice. We'll just sell this thing to the public, and we'll just see what fallout comes to the city meetings after that. And we have many more disgruntled, unhappy citizens that are gonna come forward regarding this project going forward. There's gonna be injuries out there. Mr. Delos has already said he's seen people cut through the, around the barriers and so forth. We have an elementary school very close down in Pen Grove, where citizens down there are concerned that the children are gonna be walking through those tracks, and the SMART train is expected to be traveling at over 45 to 50 miles an hour through that area where children cross. We have not even begun to scratch the surface of the problems that this project is gonna cause for the city, but to say that you didn't know, and didn't have a duty to know, and to force SMART to give you a test on how loud these horns would be, is absolutely shameful.
Thank you for your comments. Anyone else wishing to speak on this item? Seeing none, I will close public comment. So, John, we'll come to you first. How's that?
So, I'm not sure what train fever is. Is that like pingu fever, or something like that? Oh, there you go. That's it, okay. I don't know any city that brought in SMART and tested train noise ahead of time. Any city, not just Cattati. Maybe they were drinking too, so. My concern on this whole issue is the vehicle traffic on Iscatati Avenue, coming down from the university. As Mr. Wilson, has he already gone?
Yeah, he's gone.
If people living that come out on Iscatati Avenue, you have visitors to the university, you have brand-new students that come in every year. I've seen numerous people just blow through stop signs, without even being aware that there was a stop sign there. So, my concern is not so much the education and the safety of the people that are residents and are familiar with the train. My concern is people that are coming in, that are not aware of it, that are students, that are, to quote somebody I know very closely, a little college kid in their car texting, driving down Iscatati Avenue, going to Oliver's, next thing you know, slam. So, that's my concern, and I, I think that we could probably encourage a quiet zone, but I really do have a concern on the first person that misses that and is slammed by that train. You know, or if it's a new resident walking down the street and got their earbuds in, or whatever it may be. That's really my concern there on that. So, I'm not inclined to have no noise at all, but, you know, I mean, even having the startup of when the horn goes, when the train leaves the station, I think would be a reasonable compromise on that. And, of course, having lived on Highway 116, where trucks came down to a stop sign every night at the end of that street, you could hear the compression brakes, the jake brakes, and you do get used to it. You don't even realize what's going on after a while. And they're all hours of the night. They weren't just, you know, at 4:00, and 4:30, and 5:00. They were throughout the evening, throughout the day. So, I would support a quiet zone, with a little reluctance.
I just want to follow up on something John said. Damien, is it possible for us to reach out to SMART and make sure that they have done educational outreach to Sonoma State? Because John brings up a good point, and that might be, to John's point, because there is a new batch every August, and they may have a method of, kind of, orienting the new group that's coming in, and that might be something very important to bring up, an orientation, because it is not something that's everywhere. So, thanks for bringing that up.
A regular part of every new student's introductory packet.
Exactly, yeah, yeah. So, that would be, I think, ideal.
Yeah, just a couple of comments. You know, I agree with my colleague. I mean, all these things are possible, and I don't care how careful, prudent, what safety systems you put in mind. You can't legislate and prevent some of those things from happening. I mean, at some point, somewhere, if not here, something tragic like that will happen. Having said that, you'd almost have to just essentially say, "We won't take trains through where people live and work and drive." That's the only way you can prevent it, yet our whole system is bound to having it as part of our system of commerce, living, driving, and delivering commercial goods. So, I would agree with you. I'm supportive of a quiet zone, I think, and I think I'd support this as a red, and the only change I'd make is I was leaning more towards actually just asking, as we said, agreeing with this, working together, as we agreed to with the city of Roner Park and the county, and then asking to draft a letter, if possible, if prudent, for them to, I guess I'd say, accelerate their schedule as much as safely possible. If we can both just put that forward, I think that's the least we can do for the public, while at the same time, being prudent, careful about making sure we sign off all the things we need to sign off for safety. So, that would be the direction I'd go. I mean, some of the concerns, I think now that we have that arm up and down, yes, some people will drive around that maybe, but, you know, when you have a huge arm that comes down with a big light, you're not gonna get much more safety than that. I don't know how you improve on that. So, anyway, that's my thought.
It's just one component of a injury prevention program.
Exactly, and it's a significant one, so hopefully--
If you take out a component, you better make damn sure that the other things are adequate.
Yeah, I would agree with that. So, with that, I'd be supportive, when council's done discussing our questions of moving this, and if you would support it, I think that would be the only addition I would make, amendment I would make to it, is asking to see if, perhaps, Roner Park, in concert with Roner Park, if we could send a letter like that to the county, see if we could, just a little movement on that.
Wendy? A minute? John?
Yeah, again, not disagreeing with anything my colleagues have said, but I will say to John, to your comment about, you know, people blowing through stop signs, or not seeing them, or texting, whatever the distraction is. Radical difference, as Mark brought up, of a stop sign versus a train crossing. I mean, you've got a bar coming down in front of you, you've got flashing red lights, you've got a bell. I think there's a big difference there. It's not 100%, nothing is. I'm clear on that, so. And I would hope, I know back in the day when I went to get my license, there were questions in the book about, what do you do when you come across train tracks, right? You should slow down, you should look. If the arm is down, that means you stop. It's all basic stuff, but, you know, there's just too many distractions out there. I believe, to the comment made about Pen Grove, and I'm not quite sure why that's not in our jurisdiction, but I think the tracks are west of the school.
Yes.
So, where the tracks cross the road, Old Adobe Road, that's west of where the school is located further east.
Kids do walk to school.
Kids do walk to school, but hopefully they don't walk on the train track, so.
They don't.
So, yeah, I mean, I'm 100% in favor of a quiet zone, and as best as we can, you know, with some, I almost said collusion. God, that's a really bad word. Working closely with the city of Roner Park on this 180-day thing, I think would be a plus, but I've already spoken to that, so.
I've got one story I need to share with you, just along this whole quiet zone thing. If I may, Madam Mayor?
Yes.
1976, I was going down Corona Road with three other people in my car, driving to St. Vincent High School to go to a dance, picked up somebody on Corona Road, was driving, there's a railroad track right on Corona just before McDowell, and I believe they're gonna be the same tracks that are coming up here. There was no arm down and no light flashing at that crossing, and I heard the horn and stopped, and that freight train went right in front of me. I mean, so, mechanical issues will happen, where you may not have the arm go down for whatever reason, and you have a jam or something like that. If you don't have a horn, it could be detrimental.
But quiet zones don't eliminate train horns or train whistles. They're not eliminating them. So, I think that's important. It's the discretion of the conductor to sound the horn. Is that not correct?
Perhaps if there's traffic in the area.
The conductor still has full discretion if he perceives, he or she perceives a safety issue to blow--
So, in that particular case, thank God, they did blow the horn.
Right, yeah.
And, yeah, I mean, I agree with what everyone has said. I think we all hear the news, and they do have trains down in, you know, Silicon Valley down there, and there's a lot more people that cross tracks that shouldn't cross tracks, and there's, you know, a lot more accidents than I think any of us care to hear about. So, it is educational, and people will have to get, will have to get used to it, and learn to be careful. But the issue here is quiet, but trying to make it safe. I am glad that it is within the discretion of the conductor to be able to sound the horns if they view it necessary. It would be nice if they knew if there was a malfunctioning gate. You know, I don't know what their mechanisms are for letting them know, you know, that things are down or not, because I know that this train has an awful lot of mechanisms that other trains don't necessarily have. So, it would be ideal if they kind of knew that there's some kind of a malfunction. But with that--
I'd be happy to make a motion. I also wanted to suggest, your suggestion, the mayor's suggestion, perhaps, a direction for staff to reach out to SFU and request that railroad safety be part of the introductory orientation for all new students ongoing. I think that would be a prudent thing to do. And with that, let's see, I would move a motion authorizing the city manager to execute a cooperative agreement with Sonoma County to process a joint quiet zone application with Roner Park and the county of Sonoma. In additionally, to draft a letter, potentially in concert with Roner Park, to request, if prudently possible, to accelerate the 180-day schedule.
I'll second that.
Have a motion second. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
Aye.
So, you're opposed. Okay, so that would be a 4-1?
Nay.
Nay?
Nay.
Okay. Let the record show that that is a 4-1 vote, and we will move on to, let's see, let's see. We are moving on to review draft requests for proposals for the operation and maintenance of the Veranda Bledi Ranch.
Thank you, Mayor, members of the council. So, the nay is a good segue to sheep, right? I mean, that's, of course. So, the Veranda Bledi Ranch, of course, is the property across the street from City Hall that was purchased through a matching grant agreement with the Sonoma County Ag and Open Space District. And one of the things, well, so through that purchase, there's several binding mechanisms that go along with that. One is the matching grant agreement, which is in the packet. The other is the conservation easement itself, which overlays the property, and both of those things dictate, to a large degree, what types of uses are, at least categories of uses, are available on the site. And, for example, there's a detailed staff report, but for example, there's allowed residential uses, which include user lease of the farmhouse and water tower for, like, caretaking and residential type uses, and then recreational uses that are allowed, hiking, nature study, picnicking, public trails, recreational or educational signage, which have some size criteria. Agricultural uses, such as community gardens, or small farm for vegetables, flowers, fruits, so forth, low-intensity livestock grazing, and poultry production. And then historic uses allowed include farmhouse tower or barns for a museum or other educational activities. And it also goes on to allow some types of construction, including a 1,500-foot, 1,500-square-foot museum structure, and, it's a criteria for the total height and area that the structures can occupy on the place, on the property, and also allows for, you know, improvements or maintenance of the structures. So, as you know, the city recently added new fencing around the site, and the pathway in the picnic area, all which are, of course, allowed uses for the property, and some interpretive signage, or educational signage, I should say, at two entrances. You know, one at the picnic area, and the other one on West Sierra on that entrance, which isn't currently a public entrance, but is envisioned to be one in the future. And there also are some light livestock grazing that have been ongoing for several years, which is the sheep that everyone knows and loves out there on the site. And so, with that, with those boundaries, that the matching grant agreement, as well as the conservation easement, and then there's also a companion work plan that is sort of along with all of that, that all dictate the types of uses that we can have, led to where we are today, which is looking for a long-term operator for the site, to hopefully open it up for some of the uses that the matching grant agreement and the conservation easement envision, educational, agricultural, historic, maybe type uses, and maybe some recreational uses. And also attached to the staff report is a draft request for proposals to really kick off that process, to look for people that are interested in operation of the ranch. And we felt that this would, this would be the best way to really start the discussion, and get, kind of get the word out to the agricultural and educational communities that might be interested in operating the demonstration, like a demonstration-type farm, and see what their ideas are, and then bring it back, look at them, probably, well, the intent is to provide some sort of relative ranking, and then bring it back to the council for a public discussion of kind of what came back. You know, what's, what people feel in the community that would operate this ranch feel are feasible, and then have the discussion at that point, once we're, I guess, better informed as to what's available. So, so tonight, I guess, what, really what I'm looking for is looking at the RFP, and if there's any suggestions on, maybe, vision, suggestions on ranking criteria, and suggestions on where we should distribute the RFP once we do. And I will say that all the usual suspects will be covered, you know, all the, you know, resource conservation districts. They have Farmster up in, you know, Roner Park, the Health Action Group. They're aware of quite a few resources. Open Space District, of course, might have resources. Regional Parks might know of people that would be interested. So, that's the intent, is to get it out to all of those, all those groups that might have, might have, or know people that would be interested. With that, I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Questions?
Oh, Dr. Public.
Okay. Tom, do you have, you have a question? Okay. Wendy? Oh, no, I'm good. Tom?
Absolutely, thank you.
Okay.
So, a couple of concerns. One is, on the second page of the RFP, under Submittal of Proposals, the second paragraph talks about, you know, the site tour on July 6th. Are you giving yourself, and actually more, the possible applicants enough time? That's next Thursday.
Yeah, so it probably may didn't come through in the printed packet, but it's highlighted in the color version.
It is highlighted, yeah.
Yeah, that's, sorry, that was just an intent.
Okay.
See, that's a movable date, once we.
That's just a placeholder, then.
Placeholder, yeah.
Great. Then, my only other question is on, I don't have a packet page number, but it's Exhibit C in the document. I'll let you turn pages. And, and I wasn't quite sure if this is a new Exhibit C or if this was a part of an older document, so if it's part of an older document, my comment is not worth mentioning. But if it's part of this process, then it's worth mentioning.
So the Exhibit C, the intent was with the RFP, we'd put out the actual conservation easement document.
Right.
The original one.
Okay, so that is from the original one, which is, I thought, okay, well, there's an error in there, it's a wrong number, but we're not going to worry about it. If it's old news, that's fine.
Right.
People, I think people will figure it out.
Just out of curiosity, what?
Okay, well, you asked, number three item, signs, it says in paragraph seven of Exhibit B, it's actually, it's paragraph eight, so insignificant, I had to bring it up there. I just like things correct, that's all. Thank you.
Okay, thanks.
Is that it?
Thank you, Madam.
All right. Okay. Then I will open this up for public comment. Yes, George?
The city manager says words to the effect that we want to find, find an operator. I really don't understand, he threw a lot of things out on the table right now, we're looking to put out an RFP, and there really hasn't been much of a public workshop, we don't know what we're doing out there, what the RFP is going to describe. I think this is such a huge project that you need to have a public workshop, you need to do an outreach to the community and bring some folks in here in a study session and find out what you want to do out there. How marketable is this? You're going to try to find somebody who's going to operate out there? Where are the funding sources are going to come from? Is this for-profit? Is it city budget? Is it coming from a grant? I mean, I can't believe we're at the point right now, looking for an RFP, where there really hasn't been a lot of design and thought by the council on what we want to do out there. I mean, this is a perfect opportunity to bring the public in and find out what they want to be done out there. So I'm puzzled by the timing and the specificity of the, of the report at this, at this juncture. My last concern is, what's the hurry? This isn't like Obama stimulus money here, or grant money. It doesn't seem like we're on any kind of timeline that we need to use up any money before it's gone. So I've got, I've got these questions. We're in no hurry, and obviously, we want to do this right. For the community, we want to do this right, so this really feels rushed.
Thank you for your comments. Anyone else wishing to speak? Seeing none, I will close public comment and bring it back.
I mean, I'd like to just kind of address what George brought up. I mean, I don't think this is, I don't think it's being rushed, I don't, I mean, and yeah, you could extend it for months. You know, a public workshop, I think in this case, that's kind of what the request for proposal is, because you and I can come in here as citizens and we can say, well, it'd be great to see this, which is important and well and good, but we need somebody, and there's a lot of groups out there that do these kinds of, whether it's an education or demonstration farm, whether it's related to crops, and we're bound by the agreement from Ag and Open Space District, too, of course, on what you can and can't do, but I think the request for proposal, it's just, that's exactly what these are. We do these at work a lot, and, and you get those ideas coming in. Then, staff and whoever else, and probably staff from Ag and Open Space, will filter through all these applications where they have to show, here's my source of income, here's where I'm going to have the money to do what I'm proposing. So I think it addresses those issues, and that was outlined in the RFP, but, yeah, I just wanted to bring that up.
And just, just to add to that, it's kind of one of these chicken and egg things. You also don't, you also don't want to have public setting on something and get the public all excited about doing A, and there's really no one that can do A. So it's sort of looking at, well, what are the possibilities, then sitting down and saying, well, here, within the agreement and within operators, and, you know, here, here we have, here are our actual possible things that we can do with it. So it's, it's a little tough on that. So I think that's, that's the thought, because we wouldn't want to have a public suggestion for something that's just not, we couldn't find anyone to do it. So that's my two cents on that. Yes?
All right, well, I'll toss some change into while we're doing that.
Okay.
I agree with the general direction. I think it's smart to cast a wide net, see what you catch, see what comes in, and that gives us an idea of what our, what our possibilities could be, and that seems a prudent way to go forward. You asked for quick feedback, I don't much have in depth, other than one. My first pick would be year-round agricultural livestock use, because that reflects the original use, and I'm looking at the top of packet page 277, where you had vision for Veronda Falletti Ranch. So I, I think that makes a lot of sense, and there's obviously a lot of different ways that could play out, whether it's public access, youth education, demonstrations of practices, agricultural practices, and I think that depends on what sort of feedback we get from potential partners. Secondly, the idea of a community garden fits well, is an ag usage, it would be a better location, perhaps, so I think that could fit, and I'd be very supportive of it, that's, that's an easy one. And I'm open, again, to any of the subtopics listed under there, if they fit well, and if it's, if it's a plan that a partner brings, it seems like it'll work. And lastly, the long-term, especially taking a look at the cost of rehabbing the farmhouse to a really usable level, it may be very long-term, but the long-term thought of putting a museum in there seems logical, too, since this is supposed to be a snapshot in time here, that would be a good place to have this there to beautify that and provide that service. So I think that's, I like the RFP, I think it's a good process to go forward, and that's, that's the only general direction I can give you. I think you have it already here very well, personally.
Tom?
I would concur with Councilmember Lehman, and I also would eventually down the road like to see something in, in the nature of a museum or something like that. It would be, that would be complimentary to that, little open space, and potentially free up space here in City Hall.
Okay, I agree, you summarized it quite nicely. The community garden comes up quite often, because it is not in a, in a great place, and oftentimes, people don't even know we have a community garden, and so it needs to be, I think, better managed, because it is something that people ask a lot about. And the other items that you have listed in here, I agree with. I'm hopeful that we can do something with those outbuildings, it would be ideal, because that's, that's important, and I think that having a museum fits within the agreement and also can help with talking more about the history of Catatti and, and, you know, how we were farming and actually specifically the site. I mean, that's what the site, you know, specifically, specifically was. So I definitely agree with your vision and look forward to seeing, you know, what it is that we get, to see what's possible. So with that, what, oh, yes.
Hi.
Hi.
Didn't look this way.
I didn't? Oh, sorry.
I know, a little tear, I already wiped it away.
Oh.
In fact.
I thought you liked talking.
I even have a compliment, that I really enjoyed your chicken and egg analogy that you threw out there, but I'm.
That's all right.
I'm going to take that back now.
Okay, you can.
And I have no, no additional comments, but I just thought, have you considered sending the RFP to the tribe to figure?
Mm.
And I think there's a lot of reasons you might want to do that, so, just an idea.
It's interesting that you say that, because some of the things that are in here are some of the things that I know I went to, and this was a while back, a session one night, and it fits in a lot with some of the, the things that ideally that they said that they wanted to do.
Yeah, especially with the youth.
Yeah.
They really want to get them re-engaged in, you know, it was more, it was more related to growing crops.
Right.
I think it wasn't anything else, but that whole, you know, subsistence on the land kind of thing, so I think it'd be worth at least sending it to them.
Well, and along those lines, too, if we do move the museum over there, it'd be nice to incorporate as well the history involving the Native Americans who were here before we showed up.
Okay.
The only other comment I would make on that is, I'm not overly keen on a community garden. They don't have a tendency to be maintained, kept up, you know, the enthusiasm's there initially, but then you don't have the people that are supporting it. I think it has a tendency to be more well-received and maintained in an area that doesn't have any space, i.e. more of a, you know, urban setting.
I think that's part of what the RFP is, is having someone managing it, because I think that that's part of the problem with the garden that we have, is no one's managing it. It's very different than the one that's over at Marner Park, that there is an active group that kind of takes care, takes care of it. So hopefully, that's something that will come back in these proposals, is, I know that Farmster, which Damian mentioned, that their, their group is very interested in doing exactly that, teaching people, you know, how to grow crops and stuff.
Yeah.
So may, they might, you know, yeah, and they're kind of, on the flip side of that, they're looking for spots to do that, because they were out at Sonoma Mountain Village, but Sonoma Mountain Village is really more industrial, if you will, than rural, like what we have, so we'll have to wait and see, but.
Well, Veronda Falletti kind of allows both agrarian kind of works and animal grazing, and then the two smaller parcels on the West Sierra side of the residents over there could be something more related to growing crops. So, you know, you can kind of have a couple of different things going on at the same time there, so. Be curious to see what comes back.
Yeah.
Yeah, we'll be.
So with that, what's your pleasure?
I would just.
Do you just need comments? Are you, do you have what you need?
I do, yes, thank you.
All right, so, then we can move on. And, so we are moving on to appointment of a voting delegate and alternates to the 2017 League of California Cities Annual Conference.
Yes, thank you, Mayor, members of the council. So just real quickly, this, the League of California Cities has this annual conference in September of this year, in Sacramento, and we can, the council can appoint, well, appoints a voting delegate and up to two alternates. And typically, as I recall, the voting delegate is typically the mayor, and then the alternates, who are, I guess, whoever else wants to be alternates. So, anyway, with that, I'd be happy to answer any questions.
The quick question is, who's attending? Do we know who's attending at this point, or?
Well, sort of who's attending is our delegate and our alternates.
But are you, is Madam Mayor, are you planning on taking?
If I am put as the voting delegate, yes, I would be able to attend.
I think you just assured that.
Okay. Okay. So.
I guess the question, are there any volunteers? Would anybody like to go as a delegate to this? In general, I haven't gone to a lot of these, and it's, and I wouldn't, if nobody wants to go and we need somebody, I would go, but it honestly, for me, wouldn't be something I'd be elbowing my way to do, so, so I'm suggesting, if my colleagues really want to do this, so.
I would just recommend that we have at least one alternate.
Yeah.
Yeah. Well, I, very quickly, and we haven't had any public comment, but very quickly, I can't go to this, I have work commitments.
Okay.
I volunteer as tribute, no, I'm just kidding. I can go if, for some reason, Madam Mayor is unable to attend.
Okay. Sean?
Hey, I'm in Sacramento all the time.
Beautiful downtown Sacramento. Okay.
Well, I do think some of the sessions are good, but.
Yeah, I, yeah. So with that, I will open public, no, I will close public comment on that, so.
So I would nominate Mayor Harvey as the delegate, and Councilmember Skilman as the alternate. In one motion, really?
Did I understand you want to be an alternate, too?
No, not that we need a third one.
I think it says up to two alternates.
Alternates.
So that's optional.
I, I could nominate myself as the third alternate, second alternate if we need it, but I doubt that'll come to pass.
For some bizarre reason, I want to second that confusing motion, and I think I will.
You have three nominations in one.
Okay.
Yeah.
I have a motion and a second? All in favor?
Aye.
Okay. The update on PG&E Gas Safety Project and proposed redwood tree removal.
Yeah, so, so thank you, Mayor, members of the council. So, back in October of last year, PG&E came in and gave a PowerPoint and discussed a little bit about their gas line safety project, which I don't think I need to explain why they're doing a big push on gas safety, but they are doing a big push on gas safety, and that includes the hydrostatic testing that was done on our downtown transmission main, gas transmission main, that was three or so years ago. And then this is, this is follow-up work related to vegetation management. So PG&E developed some new criteria, which is attached to the staff report, and also we'll point out at this time, too, that inadvertently, the same planting plan was included twice in the packet, so in the back.
Thought it was a test.
Yeah, it was, yeah, a test for myself. So at the back of the room, in the council, in the public packet, as well as at the dais, is the correct second planting plan. And I'll just point out on the first page, it talks a little bit about why the vegetation management is important to PG&E, and it, it obviously hinges around being able to access the gas pipeline in emergencies so that they can work on it. And on the second, on the bottom half of that page, is a new sort of, they call it safety criteria, this is what they, what they will follow with new gas pipeline installations. And it allows buffer zones, there's a pipe, pipe safety zone, border zone, then the outer zone, and then outside the outer zone, you can put trees, right? Everything else is some type of shrubbery, and basically, it's just like grass over the pipeline. That's essentially it. That's what they're going for in the future. For areas that are already developed, including, like, Catatti, for example, but really everywhere else in their service territory, they are, they're doing a hybrid profile, basically looking at all the street trees in the state of, in the example of a, of a city, they look at all the street trees, and they assign relative safety priorities to them. And in the case of Catatti, there was three, you break it down into three areas that had potential tree intrusion on the pipeline safety zone. One of them is, this is the one that was handed out tonight, is in front of the eight ball. So as you know, on Old Woodward Highway, there's two planter areas, there's one directly in front of the eight ball, well, it's pretty close to the eight ball structure, and has a couple trees planted in it today, and the other one is on the other side of that driveway entrance into the gravel parking lot, near the bridge across Catatti Creek, and that is unplanted currently. And the planting plan, and they show the planting plan, as well as a visual representation of what that might look like after it's planted, and including the species of plant. So that's, that's the, and that's fully compliant with both the downtown specific plan palettes, as well as what PG&E's criteria is for planting over the pipeline. And there is, as you can see in the top-left pane, where it shows an area And there is, um, as you can see in the top left pane, where it shows an aerial photograph of the site today, and there's a red dot over a tree, so that red dot is a single tree that would be removed as part of this work, followed by the planting. The second, um, the second one is down by what we refer, we refer to as almanac, so this is down on Old Woodward Highway, between Cloverdale and Eucalyptus, on the east side of Old Woodward Highway, there's a landscape strip there. There are three trees that are identified with a red dot, and this is, um, this is packet, page 357, there's three trees identified with a red dot that are, um, in this hybrid safety model that PG&E uses deemed to be unacceptable to be almost directly over the pipeline, so they wanted those three removed. And then, um, there's also some blue dots adjacent to it, and those are trees that are, that are also very close, but they're also dead and dying, so they thought it might be beneficial to both parties to get those trees out of there and replant them with something else. So down on that same page, you can see the species of plants they're proposing, as well as the, um, a visual representation of what it would look like after the planting with those species. So that's the second area, um, and then finally, the third area, which they haven't, um, which is largely the subject of discussion tonight, is in front of the vets, Vets Hall, there are four redwood trees that are there, fairly, um, well-established redwood trees adjacent to the roadway, that are essentially directly over the gas pipeline, and they, um, they feel they need to remove those trees, and what they've proposed is that the, um, on the corner of Myrtle Avenue and Old Woodward Highway, there is a large, looks like grass area, that actually used to be the alignment for Park Avenue prior to all the roadway configurations that happened with subsequent developments, but right now, it's a, it's like a grass area with a "Welcome to Katahdie" sign, that's their wood-framed "Welcome to Katahdie." So they, they have ninety thousand dollars budgeted, and, um, so that's a slight update on what's in the staff report, the staff report said forty for the, for the, um, sort of the site prep, and then forty for the city to install a new monument, sign of some type, an entry monument to Katahdie. Um, in fact, it's ninety thousand, so, so they would be doing the site prep, which includes, um, bringing in irrigation to that, there's no irrigation there now, so bringing irrigation in there, potentially doing some planting, and probably doing some site work, because even though it looks like grass, it's not grass, it's like crabgrass or Bermuda grass underlaid by an asphalt roadway that used to be there, so they, so they have to do some site work, some site prep, to make it all, um, plantable, and then, um, and then the rest would basically go into a, into a fund for us to do a monument sign. And, the, the, the thought is, at least at this point, is that as we embark on the wayfinding program, which is, um, which we're working on now, and it'll be coming forward for workshops and public discussion, is that we can leverage that discussion for a, you know, what, what the monument sign look and feel might be. We already have one for the Northern Gateway, which is the, you know, the obelisk kind of look, it may be something like that, or it may go a different direction with wayfinding discussion, I don't know, but, um, to put it into, as the staff report says, to put it into perspective, the monument signs at the gateway are twenty-three thousand dollars. So, if we had forty thousand dollars left over from this project, then that should be adequate to, to buy and install something like that, some version of that. And, um, just to add, there, there also is the, um, the Obag II Project, which is the East Katahdie Avenue Rehab Project, and part of that, part of that project is replanting the center median, getting those cobbles out of there, replanting the center median, repairing the roadway, and also, the thought is, we replace the, um, the entry monument at that point, too, at Sunflower Park, there's an old wood-framed monument there, a wood-framed entry sign there, and, um, so that would just leave, so once, once through the wayfinding program, we establish a sort of design element, that's not the main, again, main entrance on 116 and Old Redwood Highway, but looks, or has maybe some design cues from that, we could then take it, um, and use it here as a new entry sign, and use it for the Obag Project at the Sunflower Entry Area on East Katahdie, and then potentially even, eventually at some point in the future at Commerce in Midway West Sierra, so. Anyway, I don't know if that's making, it's a very long staff report, I apologize, but that was the thinking that went behind the payment in lieu of the redwood trees. Um, and, one last thing I will say, is they have offered to provide the redwood wood to anyone we want to provide it to, um, some obvious examples are schools that have wood jobs, or other things like that, but we're, I'm obviously open to suggestions on, on that as well.
Yes.
Perfect segue, 'cause I had two questions, and the first one was, I seem to remember this happening during the removal of some of the redwoods on the freeway, when the freeway was worked on a few years ago, and it turned out they actually had a not totally insignificant value, and that was lost, uh, in county planning at least, I'm glad to see you didn't miss that piece, and I was curious, what, do we have a sense of what the retail value might be of this small number of trees that PG&E does need to remove?
You know, I, I don't, but I'm sure it's significant, it's, um, pretty, pretty substantial redwood.
Yeah, I, I would think that would, that might be something that might have some value for the city, simply going to the next question I had, um, we're looking at replacing, and I believe it's the first, the first one we're looking at, uh, the old redwood site, lilac trees, replace the dying trees and the two trees that are right over the gas pipeline, uh, and I wanted to ask what size lilac trees, you, you know, are going this, they're planting, because as I look at this, I see even though those trees, they're dead and dying, there's still kind of privacy for the backyards for the neighbors that live there next to that rather busy road, and the picture they show is very nice, I guess these are somewhat mature trees, but I'm not sure what's going to be planned there initially. So, I, PG&E, I have no complaint, PG&E's been very good, and I think staff's done an excellent job negotiating and coming up with this meeting in the middle to solve all these issues, I wonder if there's a little room to make sure, we did, like we did over in the other neighborhood, get some slightly more mature trees to be planted, and if PG&E is at their wits' end dealing with us and don't want to do that, then perhaps, perhaps some of the revenue from that wood, or if there's any excess from the entry sign could be used to do that, that, that's the only question I had, if, if they've, if they've said what that is and what flexibility they might have in size.
Well, so, um, so Vicki did grill them on this, on those lilac trees, but-
Seven to ten feet.
Seven to ten feet, immature, yeah, they, as I recall the discussion, they were fairly quick, fast-growing trees.
So they, so the privacy, that's about as good as you're going to get for a privacy concern issue when you're replacing with that species?
Yeah, they're, they're not going to get a huge, so the goal was to give them a proper plant height.
Yeah, good, okay, thank you.
Also lilacs, lilacs are very dense.
Yeah, it looked that way in the picture, and it looks like if we're getting them that big and they grow quick, that concern's solved, so that's good, thank you.
Sean?
Yep, of course, rolling tonight, I, I cannot get a visual of those four redwoods, are they north, south, or west of the vets building? Because I just, I couldn't get, all it says is, along the frontage of Katahdie Veterans Hall, so.
Yeah, um, so, as I recall, there's two on the, um, I don't know, this kind of weird orientation, northish side by the, you know, by the, um, closer to-
Going towards Park Avenue?
Yes.
Yeah?
Yeah, Parker and McGinnis Circle where it starts, yeah, there's two there, and I believe there's two on the south side of the vets building itself, it's going, going on recollection, they had a bunch, they, they had basically all of them flagged initially, and then after several iterations of discussions, we narrowed it down to what they really needed to remove.
And are they predominantly along the Old Redwood Highway, I mean-
They are.
If you're looking at it, they're not really a grove per se, they're kind of mixed and matched, but, so they'd be, there'd be two south of the building, two north of the building, but one's along Old Red, I'm looking at a photograph, that's why I'm trying to get a visual here, so.
That's my recollection, so, the gas, the gas transmission main, um, it runs parallel to Old Woodward Highway, basically just inside the curb-
Okay.
-in the park.
Okay.
So it's those trees that are basically right on top of it, so it's not a grove, it's not a cluster of trees that's just-
Right, which is good, um, but then the mitigation is going to be on the other side of Myrtle.
Correct.
Right, okay, thank you.
So there's, there's still quite a lot of trees still left there, if I'm, I'm looking at this picture, there's still quite a lot, considering what you said, that they could have taken a lot more out, there's still-
Yeah.
A lot.
There'll still be quite a few there, but, I mean, there's no doubt that you're going to notice those four trees missing.
Yeah. Where are they in relation to the, um, volleyball court, is what I was trying to picture, are they, does it run across the volleyball court?
It's, it's on the Old Woodward Highway side of the volleyball court.
Okay. Okay, thank you.
Yeah.
Any more questions?
I'm happy to walk pictures around to anybody if they really want to see them.
No more questions, I'll open this up for public comment, George, would you like to speak on this?
It may be a, a little irrelevant, but it, does anyone happen to know who may have planted these redwood trees over these gas lines? I mean, it's a lot of years ago, thirty years ago, or something, but-
More, more than that.
Thirty or forty, maybe? I'm just, it, it, it's interesting, though, that, you know, you're on city property, uh, to be planting trees over gas lines, so I thought maybe through his engineering background, we might have known who did that, or why it was done.
Thank you for your comments, do you, oh?
I, I have a question, if I may.
Can, can you at some point find-
Yeah, I, I don't-
If you can?
I don't know, I, but I, I can tell you that PG&E's criteria for plantings have changed dramatically over the years.
I can imagine.
Planting, planting over a pipeline didn't really faze anyone fifty years ago.
Yeah.
But now it's a difference.
They know a lot more now about checking pipes and things.
Yeah.
So that's a county vets building, on city property, or do we just have the right-of-way on that, by the highway?
So these are, um, these are right-of-way trees?
Right, so we don't own that whole vets building property there?
We don't own the, we don't know, we don't own the building and the parking lot, but we own the greenscape around it.
Okay.
Yeah.
Certainly.
Through the mayor, uh, we're discussing the retail value of the trees, we think it might be significant trying to see what to do with it, I'm thinking about what we just dealt with earlier, our ten landscape districts that are all in one handy format now, I wonder if we could take that revenue and split it, uh, to help that, because a lot of those are underwater in terms of not being rolling costs, and that will improve the community for everybody a small amount.
I think there's a perception that there's a greater amount of revenue on those, because unless PG&E is going to mill those, which I'm sure they're not-
And, and they may well turn out the way, I always, we remember the news story that it turned out there actually was some value, that was the first guess there might be, and I'm just saying if there is, I think that's a, a good place to see that go to, uh, because that would benefit everybody in the community, and I know some of those are, some of those are areas we worry about building up reserves in, because they're basically, have dropped below the cost of living, and there's no built-in cost escalator for them, so here's a way to bump them up a little, unless there's another suggestion, I just wanted to toss it out.
Roger, Brett.
Huh?
So, if there's, if there's no other questions or, or comments or anything, I'd be happy to move this.
I think we're just receiving an-
Or actually, no, uh, duh, 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 move, now move approval? Review and approve the proposed mitigation? Do we need to move approval? Uh, Ms. Nani?
Well, uh, since it was characterized that way, I guess I would recommend that you do it, but-
Okay, it was kind of hidden down there, I agree, it seems more like a direction, but since it does say approve, I'm going to move approval for the proposed mitigation for removal of the four redwood trees on Old Redwood Highway, uh, Highway by Katahdie Veterans Hall.
Second it.
Have a motion and a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Let that be a five-o vote. And we will move on to the city manager's report.
All right, thank you, Mayor, members of the council, so, um, a couple things to report on, um, last week, the city hosted a safety training event for public work staff, um, regionally, actually, from Cloverdale, Lakeport, Runner Parks, Vassapal, Windsor, and, and us, and this included a half-day of classroom training and the afternoon of field training, we had thirty-nine public work staff attend, I don't know if you hap, if you happened to be by City Hall that day, there was utility trucks parked everywhere around here, and, um, it was a good, I just pointed out, because it was a good example of, um, of Katahdie taking the lead, it was totally voluntary on our part, but we took the lead and got all these people organized into a training that all of us needed collectively, and rather than do it independently and inefficiently, we just, um, it was, you know, our safety coordinator, Katie Duran, who took the bull by the horn, so to speak, and got all that stuff organized, which was no small feat, there was a lot of moving parts there, so, it was, um, pretty commendable, and then also, along the same vein, a little while back, um, we hosted the Association of Environmental Professionals, um, so JP with our, um, Planning Department, Community Development Department, hosted the regional SEQA training for area planners and SEQA practitioners, and it's an annual North Bay event, and it's the third year that, um, that we've hosted this, and, of course, we get it catered by, um, our local restaurants, so, a good thing. And, um, finally, some updates on recreation, uh, everyone knows, as the mayor announced earlier tonight, next Saturday, we will be hosting a 25th Annual Kids' Day Parade and Festival, and the theme is Katahdie Celebrates Culture, so all attendees are encouraged to come, um, representing their culture, and we will start off with a free pancake breakfast at Church of the Oaks in the morning at seven AM, um, seven to ten AM, and followed by a parade from ten to eleven, and, um, if you want to participate in the parade, there's a lineup at City Hall at nine AM, and the parade will end at eleven AM in La Plaza Park, and will go to, until two PM. We have live entertainment at the park from Star Kids Production, Music to My Ears, and Alkma, along with DJ Physnic Rick hosting the event, as he has been the past several years, and there'll be dancing and games, um, for all ages, the park will be full of food, resources, crafts, items for purchase, activities, and tons of fun, and the highlights, um, this year, like last year, include a rock wall sponsored by Sonoma Clean Power, pony rides, face painting, airbrush tattoos, bounce houses, piating contests, and the infamous diaper derby, and, um, also, there's also the, uh, Sonoma County Fair, setting up a little mini fair exhibition in the park, so that's something new that we didn't have in prior years, which will be very exciting, I, I'm not sure if they're, I don't know, I don't know exactly which equipment they're bringing, if they're bringing a little mini roller coaster or what, but we'll see, um, at least, at least kind of fair games, I'm, I'm sure, and then, um, on Friday, July fourteenth, we have our second movie in the park for the summer, and we'll be showing Moana, which will begin fifteen minutes after sunset, which is approximately eight forty-five PM, and this time, we'll also have a bounce house, an inflatable obstacle course for children to play on from six to eight PM, and popcorn, we're bringing extra popcorn this time, because we sold out almost immediately last time, just wiped out our stash of popcorn, and water, and we're also adding coffee and hot chocolate for, um, for people if they want when the sun goes down, so we're adding to that event. And also, we have, as reported previously, our, our free, um, lunch program, which is ongoing here at the community center, Monday through Friday, twelve to twelve-thirty, for any child eighteen or younger throughout the summer, and all children are welcome, with no proof of income required, and, uh, lastly, we're finally, we're still taking summer camp registrations, and, um, uh, applications for councilors and training for our camp, Katahdie, our two-day Lego camps, or two Lego camps, I'm, I'm sorry, soccer camp and Moana Gymnastics Camp, and we have special reduced rates for soccer camp and Camp Katahdie, so sign up quick, before the spaces are gone, and you can call Ashley at six-six-five-four-two-two-two, if you want to know more. So that, with that, I'll let, I'll let, ask any questions.
Questions, Tom? Okay, then, oh, yes, oh.
Wow, I'll make it quick, no, I promise, I'll make it quick, um, can we just dig out the banner, since we had a struggle looking for that last year for the parade, so we can carry it, or somebody will carry it with us, whatever, thank you, I'm done, Mayor.
Okay, it's all right.
I think he just volunteered to carry the banner, too.
Sounds like it, yeah. So we will move to city council member reports, Wendy?
Thank you, um, June seventeenth, I attended the Jazz Festival along with Madam Mayor, and, um, that was a lot of fun, I think it was, it had fairly low attendance because of all of the, um, forecasted hundred-degree weather predictions that were going on, so it was actually much cooler than that, um, and, um, also Councilmember Moore was there, I remember seeing you as well, so- So, but it was, it was a really fun day, it was very well-attended, and everybody seemed to enjoy themselves. June 20th, there was a library advisory board meeting. One of the things, information that they passed around via email as well is that they're going to be present at the Kids' Day festivities, so they're going to have a booth set up about supporting the libraries, so that, I promised I would stop by and say hello and support them in that. And then lastly, June 24th, I went to a ribbon cutting at the Ultimate Bliss Day Spa, which is opened up in their new location. So it was really impressive to see all the work that, that they had done in getting that put together. Crazy amount of creativity in one woman, it was pretty amazing, and the owner, she had just a hand in almost everything that was being done. So anyway, it was really nice to meet them and to see businesses expanding. And that's it.
John?
And I, too, attended that ribbon cutting, it was great. And yeah, the woman was very creative in how she put things from her mind onto paper, because it was a big shell. And, I mean, they built walls, and they're all gone through the proper planning channels. And they have separate little rooms, so they, they offer, it's not what, well, I don't know what a day spa looks like, I've never been to one, but it's not what you would think a day spa is. They offer a lot of different, yeah, let's move on. All right. And I'm going to report out on two Ag and Open Space District meetings, because I cut them off last time from the lateness of the meetings. We now have a full house there, so there's been three vacancies. And Evan Wig, who is a very progressive green farmer, I think he's, might be out of Sebastopol, he's now on, and Paul Martin, who's a longtime Ag person out of Petaluma, and he's been on numerous statewide and national boards. And, and they were filling up, I think, two seats from David Rabbit's district. And then Toni Tosconi, who's had a long history with the, the fair around here, so she's the Ag rep, because that position had been vacant for several months. So we have two youth that have been recruited, because two that were on had left, and so we've re-recruited, and we have two members that'll be starting up probably once the school year starts, so probably September, and they'll be attending the monthly meetings, which is a, a great thing to have. And probably the most important thing coming out of Ag and Open Space is their Vital Lands Initiative, and I'm going to try to bring some more information to City Hall for the public on this one. But they are, it's kind of like the general plan for Ag and Open Space, they're looking at the next 15 years, and what they're doing with all of the money that they're gathering from their tax initiatives. And, you know, they, they do a lot of land acquisition, and then they tend to take that land and pass it on to somebody who can actually operate, like Snoma County Regional Parks. And that's been probably their biggest user of getting, getting the benefits of the Ag lands, of the Open Space lands in this case. So that's two months of summary done.
Okay. John?
Went to the REMAP meeting last, a couple of weeks back, last month, and they, we are currently recruiting for a new general manager for REMAP, and we've been looking at the structure in there. We have another meeting coming up on July 6th to look at some of the final candidates for that position. So that's moving along well. For last year, the property liability has gone up, I don't have that figure in front of me, but the auto and the other commercial property rates have stayed the same. So the only thing that's gone up on those is just as our value of the insured articles goes up, but the premium base rates have stayed the same on that, so that's good. And we are sitting on 2.9 million in reserve for our self-funded health plan, so it's going along very well. So that's encouraging. I, I say that with some reservation, because that can spike and go up and down, but right now it looks pretty healthy, so we're, we're doing good there. And then it'll be interesting what happens on the 6th, and how, how we narrow down the candidates there.
I spare.
I will be a model of conciseness tonight, as I have nothing to report, Madam Mayor.
Oh, my. Okay, so as was stated, I attended the Jazz Festival, it was a long day, was there from 11:00 to 6:00, it was long, but it was nicely attended. As you pointed out, because of the weather, a lot of people stayed away, because we had had those over 100-degree stints there, but there was actually a nice breeze, so it was nice. People were dancing and having fun, and, and I thought it was nice. I attended the Waste Management Agency meeting, and the one item that I want to bring to people's attention was that we had to increase the, the wood waste and yard waste disposal fees, and that's because we're outhauling, and the cost of outhauling continues to go up. So the fee was raised by $2 a ton for both wood waste and yard debris waste. And so hopefully, we will, since the RFP is out for bringing compost, a new compost, whatever that is, it can be in county, out of county, you know, we don't know what we're going to get yet, but, so those proposals are being worked on, so hopefully that will come soon and we can stop outhauling. But yeah, we did have to raise it by $2. So with that, that's all I have to report. And we will move on to public comment on non-action agenda items. George?
Counsel like to comment on the city manager's report? In past meetings, the city manager has promised to bring back to the council a report on the possibility of Kattati getting its own government-access cable channel or a public-access cable channel, and we're still waiting for that report. The city manager said it shouldn't be much of a problem, but it's been three meetings now, and there's been no word about it in his report. I waited 20 years to see these cameras placed in these chambers when I first brought up the idea and offered to put in the system for free back in 1997. Five years before that, I was instrumental in videotaping and televising the Roanoke Park city meetings and Sebastopol, and convinced them to take it upon themselves to do it themselves, but I initiated that project. I hope it doesn't take another 20 years for us to get our own public access channel. Okay, so I'd like to see a report back at the next meeting. We have about a month, maybe we can get something, some indication from the cable company, how they'll be able to provide us the same service as Roanoke Park has been provided for some 15, 20 years now. Also, you all know probably that the Rancho Adobe Fire District, at their last meeting, brought up the city of Kattati's lack of enforcing its weed abatement program, and there was lively discussion about what they should or are going to do about this. I would urge each and every one of you to attend one of the Rancho Adobe Fire District Board meetings and sit in and listen to the discussion, and try to bring these two agencies together before property is, is destroyed or lives are lost because of the city's neglect of its weed abatement program. I think these two agencies can come together, stop pointing fingers at one another, and act like city leaders. Also, some 15 years ago, the city of Kattati put on a program to review conflicts of interest and the Brown Act. And each and every city council member was asked to attend those meetings, and many people of the city staff and members of the police department attended those classes in Santa Rosa. I sat in a couple of classes with some of the sergeants and police officers there, and a couple of staff members here at City Hall, who also were asked for, to attend these refresher courses. I think it's high time that the city looks at putting on these courses again in conjunction with the city of Santa Rosa, to make sure that these instructors can be available to all of us to take those courses again, and would serve you well.
Thank you for your comments. Anybody else wishing to speak on this item? Seeing none, I will bring it back to the council. And information received after the agenda, I believe we had the one letter that, that we spoke about with the financial reports. And with that, I will, unless someone has some other burning issue, adjourn this meeting at 9:24. Thank you.
Burning?
Well...